Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV, Keeping Government Honest. You are watching a Fact TV presentation of the BFUHS School Board Meeting.
Get it. I apologize. Might have to start over again.
Okay.
No, we're good. Keep going.
Okay. Number seven will then be reports and it'll be listed as number six is listed to be A finance, B principal, C student presentation, and then eight, there's no change, no change for the rest of the, I'm sorry, um, we all in tennis courts. We're just gonna add a report to Steve Horton head. Did I get that all right? We made some changes?
I think so.
Molly, can I have seven D as policy committee?
Is that what you need?
No. Um, you're gonna have to go to.
It's just a one line comment.
So, so on the report, you want policy?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because we didn't have it on there, so it can go.
That's right.
So I want to just comment.
All right. Any other adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, Molly. Um, I believe I heard you say that four would be an executive session.
Correct.
I'm hoping we can have a little bit of specificity about that because I have a note here to request an executive session.
I was hoping you were gonna give me that verbiage.
For the purpose of discussing personnel contract matter.
Purpose of discussing personnel and contract matter.
Yes.
Any other comments?
Rob, yeah, I'd like to add a lead theme to the agenda of track surface. Just for bear, just for question.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, so David, can you give me a motion to go into executive session?
Yes, I move to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel, contract matter, inviting administration to attend. I will also note that the reason going to executive session is that I believe, I suspect the board will confer with me at least by the end of the executive session, that premature public knowledge would disadvantage the board and possibly the subjects of that executive session.
Thank you. We're gonna go to the fishbowl?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Should we, should we move it, Molly? I mean, vote it?
Yeah, you gotta vote on. Um, I have one board member on the screen. It's Mike Stack. Mike, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me? How's that? Can you hear me now?
Yeah, Mike, we need to vote from you, yes or no?
Yes or no to go to executive?
Thank you.
Yes.
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 Yes. I totally forgot your name, Darcey. Sorry. I was looking at you. Okay, we are now going to the fishbowl for executive session and I will do my best to get back here as soon as possible.
And it is seven thirty-five.
Thank you, everyone, for, I'm sorry, I'm gonna shut this phone off so I have another coordinator on it.
Can we do a sound check? Just could, Fact TV, can you hear us? I just wanna do a sound check.
What about Mike?
Or Mike Stack or anyone? Can you guys hear us?
I can hear you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, you ready?
Ready.
Thank you, everyone, for being patient. We are moving on to number five, reviewing approved board minutes, and we got a list of them here. We got April tenth, March twenty-fourth, March twenty-first, and January ninth. I have a motion to approve those minutes and then we'll have discussion. Thank you, June.
I make motion to approve as written.
And discussion.
Yeah, I would just, as a new board member, I would just ask that as we prepare our agendas for our meetings that we do for Thursday prior to Monday meetings, so we can find a look at it, and also potentially getting a view of minutes so that we're able to do that as well prior to Monday and on that Monday. You know, that way we're keeping minutes to one one o'clock.
Thank you, thank you.
Like you say, Edie, we're supposed to have enough in five days to get them out from you. We work very hard to do that, and that's, which is in our system and it's not imperfect. Just so you know, we're always gonna, and you better.
Jason.
Hey, Molly, I think Rob's question, we did approve last year to have the agenda to us by Friday. The principal reports to us by Friday, not supposed to happen to our, our person to do, issue, that agenda report, getting them last minute, so I'm gonna look at them that second.
Is there any adjustments on that?
Could I just say, if you're unable to get them, we will communicate that you're unable to have them, so you're not left in, not knowing that we don't have them.
Thank you. Is there any adjustments to the agendas? Seeing none, I'm gonna ask for a vote. Mike, how do you vote on approving the board minutes for April tenth, March twenty-first, March twenty-first, March twenty-fourth, there, get that right, and January ninth? Mike Stack?
Yes.
Jason? Darcey? June?
Yes.
Tanya?
Brenda?
Rob?
Yes.
Priscilla? Dave? Yes. Thank you. Minutes have been approved and all up to date. So we are moving on to six A, reduction in staff and teachers, and June, I would like a motion if the board to reinstate two positions that were reduced on April tenth meeting.
I so make that motion, but I would like to talk to you also.
Hold on. June, you can start with discussion?
Okay. Um, so I just wanted to lay it out there that the information that we were provided with was inaccurate. Um, going forward, hopefully we have, um, accurate information in a timely fashion so that we can approve these. The roster came to us, um, the meeting before April tenth, and there was some confusion on it, so we were told that it would come back to us on April tenth, um, so that put us in a bind. I am going to say, I do think we, the high school is slightly overstaffed, but the budget was accepted with the two positions that, uh, we riffed last meeting, and with that said, that's, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Jason?
Thank you, Molly. I would just like to echo what June said, uh, you know, we asked for stuff and it's only seems to come in late hour and, uh, we were not given what we asked for, and, uh, I know I've asked for performance evaluation. It's not each individual performance evaluation, you know, how's everybody doing, meet standards, or whatever. It seems like you've been asking for us for years and it's always after the fact, so, uh, I have questions. Thank you.
There's been so much discussion about this in the last two, three weeks. I'm just gonna go around the table and make sure. Darcey, anything like that? Tanya? Brenda? Rob? Priscilla?
Yeah, I would like to add that I think that's a good thing to put back in the social studies because I don't wanna see somebody without a job, but because we have the other open position and we have an overstaffed, um, situation, I would love to, uh, I think overall, I'm not willing to post it all because I don't want, we both positions put back in, and I'd like to see the social studies tomorrow.
Baby?
Oh, good to hear, Molly.
Oh, sorry, Mike. Mike Stack?
I apologize. Can you hear me okay? Yeah, the bottom line is, you know, I feel like there are some longer term issues that we're gonna have to address when it comes to the curriculum in the school, uh, and that it's gonna potentially impact the, the staffing, but, uh, we kinda came at this sideways and I'd like to do it in a, in a orderly manner and, uh, approach it in a more, um, robust process. So I think, I think we're gonna rethink the, the vote.
Thank you, Mike. So first thing I'd like to do is thank everyone for, for coming. Um, I'm sorry that I got y'all out here tonight, but maybe, maybe there wasn't anything good on TV, but I really do appreciate and love to see people here. Um, I, I'm sorry that you're here because maybe we were doing something that you didn't like, but that's part of why we're here too. Hopefully someday you show up because I do something spectacular. Um, you all, I'm sure have watched the vote a hundred times. Um, I wasn't a supporter of it, and I just wanna take a minute to explain what we, what my gut was telling me was that if this was, if this should have happened, it should have happened back in budget season and it didn't. And so I didn't support it. I was on the budget committee. I, you know, I've been sitting at this table for long enough to know how the system works, and I am pleased that it sounds like probably we're gonna have these two positions back in. Um, I do, you know, I wouldn't be doing my job, none of these people would be doing their job if we didn't really look hard at where we are with numbers, where we are with class sizes. This was the wrong time to do it in, in my position. I felt that we, you know, we should have done this six or seven months ago if, if we were going to do it. Uh, not fair for all you kiddos that are sitting here that are looking for a special class next year, and maybe you weren't gonna get it because we gotta make sure we get the classes that direct, that you are required. Um, so I thank you for all coming. I hope that at the end of this vote, it turns out the way you all wanted it, and, um, I, I appreciate the support. With that said, I'm gonna call a vote. So right now, we have a motion on the table, the board to reinstate the two positions that were reduced on April tenth meeting. Mike, how do you vote?
Vote to, yes, to reinstate.
Thank you. Jason?
Yes.
Darcey?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yeah.
Brenda?
Yes.
Rob abstaining?
Abstaining.
Priscilla?
Yeah.
David?
Molly, I vote no.
Okay, so the motion passes, and we are gonna move to six B, which is, um, Mr. Obi or Mr. Clark, would you like to come up? I think they made this little table here.
Mr. Me? Great, thank you for having me. Um, I have a prepared speech, which I thought I was gonna be speaking before the vote, so I'm gonna be asking you to reconsider that. Please don't now. But I'll refer to it as April tenth. But I think what I have to say will clarify some things that there were some, uh, misrepresentations, I think, as to what should have happened. So this is, uh, from my department, but specifically me. Members of the board, uh, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Justin Obi, the coordinator of the social studies department, and I've been dedicated to the students in this school and community for the past nineteen years. I'm speaking today to ask you to reconsider your decision to cut the social studies and math positions. I believe that this decision was done in haste with a lack of examination and thoroughness that is needed to make such a major decision. As I watched the meeting, it was clear that the conversation was more concerned about the number of the student to teacher ratio rather than the specific needs that support students in a variety of ways. It is disheartening to hear that even though the budget passed, which means the voters of this community were satisfied with the plan for next year, the board took it upon themselves to reduce staff, which takes away individual instruction and support away from students. This decision will unnecessarily drive up class sizes in a school without walls, remove engaging classes that are currently offered, and lead to less supports for the student body who are still struggling from the effects of the pandemic, which are both so, social, social, emotional, and academic. When Ms. Lambert brought up her proposal, she stated that it did not, uh, think it will have a big impact on the students. This could be, could not be any further from the truth. This decision is going to negatively impact students at this school. She stated that she looked at the social studies because there were three classes this year with under ten students. Those three classes are the three AP classes that we offer. My department is proud of the fact that we can offer a variety of classes that allow students the opportunity to receive college credit and gain specific skills that allow them to become competitive in both applying to college and succeeding in it. I can't count the amount of times that former students and parents of those students have thanked one of the members of my department for pushing them with such academic rigor. Ms. Lambert also stated that these students can't share good dialogue with classes of three or four students. This is also a false statement. With the right teaching leadership and motivated students, classes of three or four students can have a fantastic dialogue with one another. The four teachers in the social studies department are passionate about this, and many of the students here tonight can attest to this. In addition, cutting a position would increase class sizes, such, thus making discussions a lot more difficult in a building without walls. So your decision does not, does the opposite of what you're actually intending, I believe. Back to those AP courses, let me explain the success of our current three AP classes. I have pulled the test scores of our students and compared them to both the state and global averages over the past five years. Please keep in mind that a passing score for the AP is a three, four, or five on these tests, and anything over a fifty percent passing is considered really good amongst, uh, the nation. In AP US history, we have a passing percentage of sixty-seven percent, where Bellis Falls average is three point zero four, meaning all kids average above the passing grade, where the Vermont average is only two point eight four six, and the global average is two point six five eight, again, better than the other two. AP comparative government has a ninety-three percent passing rate in this school, a three point eight six Bellis Falls average, a little lower than the Vermont average of four point zero five. There's only one other school that offers it in the state, so they beat us one year is basically what happened there, and the global average of three point two three. And lastly, AP World History Modern has a ninety-six percent passing rate, a Bellis Falls average of three point nine nine eight, a Vermont average of three point four seven eight, and a global average of two point eight one six. AP classes are an investment in the future of our students. I fear that by cutting a social studies position, there will be a strong likelihood that these classes will no longer be offered. If this is the case, our students will not be as competitive in applying for college and the other future endeavors. Thus, I can predict that many students will opt to go to other schools rather than enriching our own because of their futures will be negatively affected by this decision. This week alone, I wrote two recommendations for underclassmen who are looking to seek education elsewhere since the April tenth meeting. Another success of the social studies department is the fact that students love us. I remember when a former student superintendent was hired in our district, the late Johanna Harpster. When she first met my department, the first thing she said to us was that students raved about my department at her interview. Over the years, a few members have moved on to other schools, but they're replaced with awesome and fantastic teachers. Students love us because we're caring individuals who put them first, although they grown at times, they love us challenging them and thinking about the world around them. They love us for making learning fun most of the time. Let me give you an example of this. All students need three social studies credits to graduate, but most students take more than three that we teach. Our electives are among the favorites of all the electives allowed in this school. Next year alone, um, forty-eight juniors and seniors requested to take psychology and sociology. Twenty-five students requested senior seminar, eleven requested economics. Those three classes alone total eighty-four students wanting a non-required course. Several students expressed to myself and the counseling department that they would have liked to have signed up for twentieth century history through film, a current class that we're doing this year with thirteen students in it, but they had to make a choice amongst other social studies classes and the other classes that they need to requirement, as requirements for their schedule. Unfortunately, by cutting a social studies position, you'll be limiting such opportunities that students have waited their high school careers to take. And I would like to make one last point. I was completely disheartened when Mr. Terry claimed that for the past few years, he's been asking, what can we do to improve the overall ranking of our school, and when he tried to answer his own question with, it's going backwards with the current staff that we have. I find this incredibly insulting and untrue. Our students in this community have struggled, and many are still struggling from the effects of the pandemic. We have more students with social and emotional struggles from that, and on top of that, we have many academic deficits from all the lost learning from those specific years. For data on this, you just need to look at the math and LEA SPECT scores from twenty, twenty twenty-one and twenty-two school years of our current ninth and tenth graders. The students in our district are significantly lower than the state average in both those categories. I would say that our staff has been working tirelessly to try to bridge those gaps, none of which are quick fixes. Most of the current staff remain from when we were ranked sixth in the state. Much of the ranking was based on AP scores, by the way. The difference between then and now was a pandemic that negatively affected schools, educators, and their communities. Unfortunately, blaming the current staff is only going to drive more of this fantastic staff away. Votes like the April tenth vote do not show teachers and students that you support them. On the contrary, it shows that you're only looking at them as a statistic. The current state of education is a sad one. Many professionals are retiring early or leaving the profession completely. Finding highly qualified replacements for such people who are as dedicated as the staff at this high school is going to be immensely difficult. I regret, I have regretfully written five letters of recommendation for current staff members this year who are seeking employment elsewhere or at least testing the waters because the job is hard and they do not feel supported in this school by the school board. I think it will be a difficult, uh, to find a solid principle, as I believe we are currently searching for one, when so many members of our school district feel unsupported. Again, I ask you to please reconsider your vote from April tenth and put the needs and wants of our students first, and by putting them first, you'll make a positive difference on their lives. Thank you for listening.
I just asked, um, um, because I've gotten a couple emails from folks. Justin, you did a great job. It's just as you're speaking, if you can, you know, project your voice as, as loud as you can, and, and know that means you're not yelling at us, but we can move you closer too if that, um, and, um, just, just if, just whomever, any board member too, um, it just, it helps the people online, that's all. Thank you.
So just so everybody online, if someone doesn't know, this is Tim Clark.
Yeah, hello. Um, my name's Tim Clark. I'm a math teacher and I would be the coordinator for the math department next year, uh, when Ms. Swan retires, exactly. Given the reinstatement motion that just passed, I'm gonna focus on addressing some of the, uh, inaccurate facts that were stated at that April tenth meeting, namely by David Clark, who said that, uh, last fall, when we had a fifth math teacher resign unexpectedly, that the math, all those math classes were easily absorbed. Those were his words. Those words were false. The math teacher who resigned was teaching four individual blocks, and she was co-teaching two other blocks with Rob Oaks in a morning freshman algebra class. That morning freshman algebra co-teaching spot was, uh, a highly preferred model for that group of kids in that full year algebra class, and when she resigned, uh, that group did move into one, uh, group with Rob. So that's the only one that was covered as, as it was. All the other four classes that she was teaching had to be restaffed. She was teaching a second block proven stats class, and we were incredibly lucky, just lucky to have Ira Richardson here as a student teacher. Um, he was here, uh, he's a teacher in training, and, um, I was his mentor teacher, and Susan Swan and I, well, first, Ira was able to get special permission from his teacher program to solo sooner than usual. Um, so in consulting with Susan and I, Ira essentially solowed and taught that, uh, helped teach that proven stats class, plugged in to cover that for those kids that were in there. Uh, the teacher had left behind a fourth block algebra two class, and Susan Swan, whose fourth block was free, agreed to take that algebra two class, and her first, uh, block where she had, um, she, she had to reassign some kids out of her first block to, that were there for arc math, um, over to AEP, uh, but she did retain one, uh, independent student. So Susan Swan covered that fourth block class, and, and it basically had students in all four of her blocks, which you're supposed to have a free block, but she, she agreed to do it at the time under the, under the circumstances. In the second semester, uh, the teacher who left, left behind two geometry classes, second block and fourth block. At that point, Ira Richardson, I mean, talk about stepping into the frying pan. Uh, at this point, Ira Richardson, Richardson was hired on an emergency license, and he's teaching those two geometry classes now. I just wanna point out that Ira is a twenty seventeen grad of Bellis Falls High School. He's a product of the awesome AP classes that were here. He attended Dartmouth and graduated, graduated in twenty twenty-one, and he wanted to come back and teach as a math teacher in his high school. So amazing resource Ira is. He's incredibly intelligent, sharp guy. Already asking Ira's opinion on things, um, in the math department. So I just wanted to set the record straight on those. My other information for tonight really pertained to the impact of not having a fifth math teacher. That's been taken off the table now, so I'm gonna conclude my remarks now. Yes?
Tim, uh, just a question. We don't normally, but I'm gonna ask because I guess I can. Ms. McKay, is she teaching a math class right now?
Okay, yeah, that's a different situation. Want me to go into that a little bit?
Well, I just, you know, we're talking about covering classes.
Sure, so Rob Oaks is a, is a, is a math teacher here at the high school. There was a need at the middle school to plug in some, some live math teaching. Uh, Rob and Mr. Haas and the math department, uh, collaborated to get Rob over to the middle school for some of their classes. He left behind two classes. Um, Jenny McKay, the assistant principal, who came out of our math department last year, took one of his algebra classes, and Ira took the other one. So we did help, we did also have to staff those two classes that he left behind, and that's, uh, you know, been going well.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Molly. Point of order. Is there gonna be public comments?
There is. I'm getting that. Um, we adjusted the agenda and it's, you got tennis courts and then communication public comments. Andy, you're up, tennis courts.
Yeah, so I just wanted to inform the board, um, Steve Horton has been out, um, working on the tennis courts and trying to get a contractor to come in to, to redo the surface of the tennis court, and, and what we're finding is that, my, oh, I'm done, okay. What we're finding is that, um, um, we're not getting any contractors because the job is too small. Um, and what, what Steve has, um, suggested, um, in his role as our product, project manager, is, um, what's been suggested to him is if we were to go out and do the whole tennis court, which means not just the servicing, but redo the, um, the fencing around it, the, the pole setting and, and all of that stuff, that there might be some contractors who are interested in that size of job because it becomes a much bigger job at that point, um, but that would. But that would increase the probable cost of between four, forty thousand dollars to resurface, up to about two hundred thousand dollars with the fencing and everything. And before I go out with an RFP or anything of that, of that size, I wanted to come to the board and just see if that's the the wish of the board is to go that direction, or do you want us to hold off on moving forward? We could also potentially look at just going in and filling the patches right now, which would, you know, be about ten thousand dollars.
And would somebody just do that?
We could have someone come in and just do the patching, yes.
Jason.
Can I, Andy, is that Molly?
Sure.
So, so everybody knows, came to the school today with Molly. I asked her to meet me here and wanted to look at the tennis courts because I feel that if we're gonna do something right, we're gonna do something, do it right. I'll just put a Band-Aid on it because that won't, already have on that?
No, I don't.
Because that won't do anything.
I'm done.
So, what Andy said about the information, that is new news. I did not know that. So, basically what we did today is we want, I wanted to look at if we replace the tennis courts. Well, first, we need to replace, we need to fix, we need to do something, right? And we came down, we looked at the parking lot and initially the idea was if we're gonna just replace them or fix them up there, who's to say in ten years it's not gonna happen again? And I know in this town, it's hard to change, it's hard to get people to change. So, first thing we did was looked at the parking lot. We've been very schematic of what the parking lot looks like. Those are all the spots. We have some green space. And then behind the softball field, we have a hundred, walked it off, not exact, about a hundred and twenty feet by two hundred and ten feet available space. Okay? So, in these pictures, if you look at, sorry. Next page is a graph of our current tennis court, which is a hundred and seventeen feet by two hundred and thirty-four feet. Okay? So roughly the same. All right? You have, and then the next page is some pictures. The first picture is the chain that protects all the people. When that chain's up, nobody ever goes over that chain, right? So, yeah. So if you're gonna walk up that, up to that tennis court, it's quite the hike to get up there. Okay? And the idea is, we have very few tennis players. Okay? But we have people that might want to do it. So my thought was, again, if we're gonna do it, do it right. Why don't we do something where we put a lid over it? And we can, it can be multi-use. So you can do, so for example, basketball season here, you're fighting for the gym between the boys and the girls. So maybe the boys can go over there, the girls or whatever, JV varsity. Same deal with baseball season. It's raining out, you gotta practice in there. You got pickleball up there. You can have field hockey. You can do other things other than just tennis. Because if you're gonna spend the money, you want to do multi-use, right? Which is my opinion. So these are the pictures of what we took, what we took today. The the third one here, that is a culvert that is just full of leaves. So there's no drainage from the tennis court coming down. So that, that's like an immediate thing. All right? There's a bench up there that is obviously in disrepair. Okay? You get some more benches, get some signage that everything is faded and needs to be fixed. You got the boys bathroom. Looks like a, it's terrible looking, all right? Hopefully we can agree with that. That's, that's, that was open. That's what, if we have away teams coming here, that's what they're using. That's what they're currently using. And I want, I think everyone would agree here that we want something that's proud of our school, what it's gonna look like. Okay? You have a a brown fence up there. A, it should be purple, right? B, it should be repaired. Okay? Because what do they use that for? Is that like practice for tennis or? Yeah, so it obviously needs to be fixed. And then, you know, another picture we just saw of, we repaired the track a couple of years ago, but it's due to wear on the track. It's very faded. So I have a lot of things that need to be fixed. And so then the last couple of pictures are just, I got them off Google. It's a basic, it's a basic dome. All right? So I looked it up. You know, did you want to these, it starts at about thirty thousand dollars to do one of these. Okay? You could heat it, you can air condition it. You can have, and then the best part is, we never decided to use it for revenue. You could do AAU tournaments out here. And then you're, then you're making money on it and would eventually pay for itself. So, you know, I'm not in favor of putting a Band-Aid on a tennis court. I think, you know, for four tennis players that, you know, I think we need to do something for them if they're all going to away, away, they have to go to Bradbury and play. I think they should be reimbursed for gas. I, I don't know what the solution is, but, you know, I feel terrible that this wasn't done last year and it should have been. So anyway, Molly, that was my idea. That's what we looked at today, other than doing a tour in here. So hopefully we can do something right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess, Jason, thanks for that presentation. I guess there's a lot of things on the table. I guess my question as a board member is, we have facilities that are currently there for our students and our community. And it doesn't matter to me whether it's one or a hundred kids participating in it. It is our community. And so my question is, if the money has been allocated not just to pitch, but to redo the tennis courts, is that active in the budget?
So we have capital improvement funds that are set aside. It's just to, we, we had a, we had approval to go out for an RFP for up, up to forty thousand dollars to do the resurfacing. And so what I'm looking for is if the board would, we're, we're having difficulty getting anyone to come in, not even this summer, but next summer. So people are, so, but we're told maybe if it were a bigger job, they might be more interested.
Just a point of clarification, there's a difference between patching it and refinishing. Are you talking about refinishing it?
So we're talking, we are talking about coming in, digging up the asphalt, resurfacing the whole thing. So, but, but we could also just patch it and, and, and do that if we wanted to explore longer-term options. So I just wanted to give the board as much.
The other thing I'll, I'll say regarding tennis courts is the surface of that, when you have a lot of other things on it, you're gonna wear that court out significantly quicker and impact the current use of it.
Thank you.
I would like to be able to accomplish something being on this board. And I would, I don't, I don't want to patch it. This whole grounds is falling apart. This building needs so much work. I would vote, and I like the proposal to move it because it's not in a good place where it is. It might have been a hundred years ago when they put it in. It might have been in a good place. But we have, next to the softball field, there's that whole green space that easier to get to, easier. And, and, and if we can get somebody to do it sooner rather than later, then I'm all for it.
If we were looking to move the tennis courts down lower over by the softball field, I would need to have Steve come in and give us his ballpark estimate of what that would cost. Because we're talking about an area that already has a substrate with it, that's already been compacted and you're literally pulling up asphalt and putting down new asphalt. I understand what you're saying. I mean, if you're putting a fencing and all that stuff, so I don't know what it would cost. I don't know what that underneath that grass is, you know, how much mud, how much rock and all that. But I definitely could ask him to do that and come back with some better numbers. I forgot to mention, you know, get going. So I was, we, we both were looking at, you know, putting it up there as well. You know, and then putting, you know, fixing it and put a dome up there, or cutting out some trees. And so you can have parking, but, you know, down here compared up there, there's more parking where, you know, adults might use it eventually. So that, that was all.
So perhaps maybe this is something we can table to building and grounds and.
Yes. So, you know, when you go up there with a different set of eyes and you just, and you, you know, hopefully your eyes are wide open and you look at it, there's definitely some tree removal that ought to happen anyways because a third of the court is all black because there's no sun on it and the trees are leaning over it and they need to get cleaned up. The, the biggest thing when, when I went up there was thinking about, you know, we got some kiddos that love to play tennis, and there's also probably a whole bunch of adults in the community that like to, but do they really want to walk all the way up there? So I'm gonna throw one more wrench in the toolbox for you to think about. If we're gonna, not if we are going to fix the driveway, that is the thing that I'm never getting off this board until it's done. So you're stuck with me. Why don't we think about what it would cost to pave that, make that a drive and let people go up there, make parking spots up there? You know, this is all things that, you know, it's just like, we just spent an hour on, you know, worrying about and making sure that the kids got what they needed, but it's everywhere, you know, and so I think if we're gonna do it, I'd like to really, I'd like to really look at all avenues before we just pull the trigger and, and let's resurface it. What's the, what should we do? So, yeah, I would very much like to send it to building and grounds and let's get a plan and let's get a proposal and let's get some prices.
Yeah. Just, that's why I wanted to bring it back because there was such urgency on it that he jumped on it. That's what he found out. We wanted to bring it back.
So my understanding is, it's not gonna get done this year by any means. So if we, if we need to do some work on this for a month before we do something, I would like, I would like to do that as we do it right.
Is there a possibility that if we pull the trigger, it could be done this summer?
No, I, I can't guarantee. The way construction's going and everything like that, that.
Well, also to leaving it up there and making parking spaces, tennis is the same season as track is, and they use that field for shot put, discus.
I'm not gonna take any green space. If you go, so I'm speaking out of turn right now, but I'm gonna tell you what I saw up there. What I saw was, cut down ten to a dozen trees. I'm not telling you to clear cut. I'm just telling you, cut down the trees that are hanging over the tennis court. And a little bit of work in there, you could make a dozen parking spots. If you're looking at the tennis courts where those, where that wood fence is to the right, you could make a little bridge there so you're not damaging the drainage. You know, I'm just throwing that out there. Don't, please don't put this on, you know, Bradbury former that Molly redesigned tennis court. But I've been a known of job sites to see things, and that's what I saw.
Has an actual tennis company come and looked at the court or have they just sort of done over the phone? I'm just wondering if they would recommend a different area? Or do we clean up what we have and keep it right there?
I think that's where Steve was kind of going with it, that, you know, the local contractors would love to help us out, but they're so busy right now where they used to have, you know, fifteen, twenty guys working, they can now got.
Right.
That they just can't fit us in to do a resurface.
I just didn't think it could come in and do like a.
And so Steve wants to go out to look to do, like, someone who come in to do the whole thing, and so then he could attract someone like that. So I, hearing that, that's what I think, you know, when you go back to building and grounds, to know, to give him direction.
Thank you.
Priscilla.
Yeah, if you're talking about cutting ten, twelve trees and putting in parking and all of that stuff, you probably have to get it approved. You're rocking him first because Headley Field does not belong to the high school.
Yeah, I'm not sending him to do it tomorrow. I don't have my chainsaw, my Terry now. Sorry. All right, and we also have tennis courts. We're gonna send it to the building and grounds committee. Perfect. Thank you. Okay. We are ready for communication and public comments. And the only thing I'm gonna ask is that you come up to the table and just announce yourself, please. Come on up. I can't see. I don't even put your arm.
Good evening. My name's Jody Hauser, and I'm here reading a statement on behalf of Wyndham Northeast Education Association, the union representing the professional and support staff of WNESU. I have this long thing, which I have since shortened. So first of all, thank you for reinstating the two positions. However, the association would like to remind the board that written notice of these riffs was not given to the association as outlined in Article eleven point two of the Professional Staff Collective Bargaining Agreement. And the superintendent did not recommend the elimination of these positions as stated in Article eleven point three of the CVA. Thank you again for reinstating the two positions and.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? John?
Hello, John Shaka, a community member, taxpayer, father of a child in the school, and a business person. And I have something that I've written out, which I'm going to only hit highlights in light of your reversal of your decision. I'd like to say thank you to all the board members that voted to reverse it. But I do have some issues with what was said in that April tenth meeting. I watched it four or five times, and it wasn't just a decision to do it. It was more the sentiments of the board and some of the thoughts of the people on the board. And now that it's been reversed, I think we should just, or I feel like I should address those, those things. So I'm gonna kind of jump around and not read everything I wrote. But, but one thing that was said that they didn't think that this would have any real impact on our students, that's a quote, I didn't think from Priscilla. And we have since come to realize it does have a real impact on our students. The math that Priscilla gave going from four point five two to, excuse me, fourteen point five two to fifteen point six five students in a classroom wouldn't make a difference. One student wouldn't make a difference. But the classes that are gonna get cut, the scheduling, all the things that the board didn't consider when they just proposed this and voted on it. You know, it, it, it's disheartening that, that we did this without really thinking and looking at it and, and talking about those issues. Another thing that was said, and I'm gonna read a couple of quotes, and I apologize. When you get down to those low members, you don't have a class that you can even share good dialogue and have good conversation in a class. I beg to differ with that. I think smaller classes promote a better learning environment. I think, and I had written on this page, that if we polled all the teachers in Vermont, but we don't have to, we can poll all the teachers sitting behind me, I think that they would all agree with, with me that smaller classes promote better learning. I know we don't have unlimited funds and we can't have tiny classes, but to have the thought of board members that, that smaller classes aren't good, that's fearful as a parent with, with kids in the class, thinking that, that that's the, the thoughts and the feelings of, of this board. Jason Terry, I don't know you very well, but you did say, I've asked, I've been asking for years what we can do to improve the overall ranking of our schools, and it's not improved with the staff that we have. It's in fact gone backwards. So I'm not sure what that means. I'm really, I'm unclear on how cutting teachers, offering less class options, making class sizes larger and those type of things are going to improve overall ranking. I think that's the last thing that would improve. As a matter of fact, I think if we just cut teachers, we're going to have our ranking go down. We, we, we heard from some teachers that spoke about that. I think that we need those teachers, and now that we've reinstated them, we don't have to say why. David Clark spoke on to why he supports the motion. And he said, the state of Vermont runs much smaller class sizes on average than practically every other state in the union. And his quote was grossly misstaffed. Grossly. Do you hear that word? Overstaffed. If that's the thought of this board that we're grossly overstaffed, then cutting two wasn't enough. I would say you should have cut a lot more if that's the truth. Now, I don't believe it's the truth, and I hope you don't believe it's the truth. But again, as a concerned parent, if the feeling of this board is the high school is grossly over. But again, as a concerned parent, if the feeling of this board is, is the high school is grossly overstaffed, we're in trouble. Um, and, and I just want to say how comparing to the whole nation, when you're in a small school, it's math. It's not, it's not the, anything but math. When you have 80 kids in a class and 10 of them, 10% are going to want to take AP or want to take I, you're going to have 10 kids in an AP class or 10 kids in an I class. You can't have a classroom of 25. Uh, if you have a class of 400 and 10% want to take it, you have 40. So you can have two classes of 20. Okay, so, so, you know, we aren't going to be what, what metro areas have. We are Vermont, okay? So to have smaller class sizes, I think we need to, we're, we're going to have to. Or we're going to not offer our kids the variety of classes, whether it's AP, honors or this or that. And, and you know what that'll do? That'll drive our, our, our students to seek elsewhere. Um, so, so I 100% disagree that we're grossly overstaffed. And I hope you think that too. Because if you're thinking we're grossly overstaffed, it scares me what the future holds. So that, that leads to my closing. What scares me most is the overall sentiment of our school board. They feel the school is grossly overstaffed. They believe that less teachers will result in better school ranking. This, they expressed that smaller classes aren't good for communication, dialogue and learning. And now they're using their power with this motion to act on their beliefs. Um, my fear is if we stop these cuts and, and it goes on to say what it is, but we, we reversed it. So in, instead of, I'm asking the board to reverse their motion, which you already did. I'm going to, I'm going to ask and beg the board instead. I'd like you, the board, to listen to the teachers. Listen to the students. Listen to the ones that are doing it day to day. Don't go off saying it's easy to absorb these math classes unless you're there absorbing those math classes. Okay? And, and try to accommodate their needs and give our children the best possible education you can give them within your budgetary constraints. Thank you.
Before I move back onto the floor, is there anyone on the screen that wants to speak?
Um, I see clapping hands. And that is all, I see, I don't see any hands raised.
Okay. Anyone else? Um, I'm going to take the young lady in the front and then the gentleman with the hat on.
Um, okay, let me get my. I, well, I prepared, I prepared it, um, before you guys reversed the decision.
Would you just give us your name?
Oh, right, sorry, I might have spied a lot in. Um, but I made the, I wrote this before you reversed the decision, but I feel it's still important to say.
Absolutely.
So, um, I'm a part of the sophomore class. Um, and I would like to start off by saying that the decision made at the last meeting uh, would harm my education as well as so many of my other classmates. Uh, I'm currently in AP World History and I'm expecting to take AP American History next year. I was also planning to take AP Calculus, but, um, I don't think I would have been able to due to the cuts because there wouldn't have been enough teachers. Um, that means that if I had wanted to stay on track, I would have, that I set for myself, I would have had to take AP Calculus online. And I have taken two online math classes, um, in my time as a, as a student. And one of those classes I took last semester was Algebra II. Um, I took it in one semester, which is half the time somebody usually takes it. And, um, I wasn't taught all the things that people in person were taught. So I wasn't fully, like, I didn't have all of the basics for pre-calculus that of my other classmates, uh, do. Um, also, even when the content in those classes isn't, isn't extremely hard, when online, it is hard to find the motivation. Um, so the decision made would have made a lot of students have to take classes online, which is extremely challenging. Um. Okay, not to mention that classes were, would now have been larger, um, which will not only be distracting in a school with no walls, but it would be even harder for students who struggle with the content to obtain the content. Um, and they wouldn't be as successful. I personally love the individualized time I have with my teachers in, um, smaller classes and it helps me excel in them. Uh, it has been said that the decision was about the numbers, but the classes with least students were typically the most challenging classes. Uh, those classes are taken by students like me who need the challenge to stay stimulated and enjoy school. Not to mention, um, those challenging classes are what help kids get into more challenging and like better colleges. Uh, nobody knew that this, that the decision would be, would have been made, seeing as it wasn't like publicized or really talked about. Uh, so it was completely out of the blue and made without much student or staff input. The budget had also already, I mean, these points have been said already, but the budget had also already been agreed on by the town taxpayers, or the towns taxpayers with the assumption that all the current positions would remain. I am however glad that you reversed the decision anyway. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Ken Berry. I'm a freshman here. Uh, and I'm here to talk about the impact of taking away teachers' position and just the impact that it gives to students. Uh, Mr. Boznik, the position that would have been taken away. Uh, she really just impacts everyone, you know, after first block, you're like, ah, I, I just failed that math test. You come in there, she's, she's smiling. You're thinking, I'm going to have a great day today now. If you took away that position, that would really impact someone, all right? That would really impact you mentally, though change the way you look at school. And I have heard in third block, uh, global citizenship, it's a great class, great. It's just great in general. And I think that if you took that away, many freshmen would be, I think they would be, you know, I think they would have a hard time getting into harder classes. I'm not an academic person. I'm not looking at this academically. I'm looking at this to impact students. There's obviously students here that are taking this class. His son's in the homeroom, you're in the homeroom, Andrea. They're all impacted by this because this is their family friends. These are the teachers that they look up to. These are just their friends. These are people that, you know, really make their life better. And I feel like if you took that away, which I'm glad you guys have not, uh, would have impacted people's lives negatively. That's all I'd like to say, thank you.
Hello, I'm Lori Bellotten. I am a teacher in this district, but right now I'm representing myself as a community member and a parent of four former students who went through this high school, actually this whole district. And, um, we're fortunate enough to participate in AP and honors level courses. And I also appreciate athletics. I just see some irony here in this discussion tonight. First, I also want to appreciate that your vote tonight, so thank you for that. The irony I'm seeing is the amount of money that is being discussed toward athletics and the discussion about eliminating some positions that would impact our students. My children who, uh, went, who, who had access to the AP classes have gone on with lots of their classmates and students from all other years to be productive citizens, um, with professional careers that I am so proud of. They received a very enriching education at this school. Some of their class sizes were quite low. They developed confidence. They represented and continue to represent themselves in the world of business and every, everything they're doing with their careers. And they are representing Bellows Falls Union High School in the world. And I implore you to not, I, I, I see that today's discussion has come to the vote and that's wonderful. And I implore you in the future, please remember that our children in this community go out into the world and they are our town's, our, our region's legacy. And we want to have that out in the world, that they can say, I graduated from Bellows Falls Union High School and here I am in the world, a productive citizen. And I am again so proud of them and so proud of the teaching staff that my students had, my children had access to here at this high school. So please remember that in the future. That is so important. So thank you for listening.
So I have three young ladies and you're going to have to rock, paper, scissors, shoot, because I don't know who was first. Are you all, are you all doing it together? One to the right. There we go, we got the middle, the last one.
So, hi, my name is Regan Rai. I'm a junior student here at Bellows Falls Union High School and I've taken all AP and honors courses since my freshman year. This has allowed me to get ahead on my future and given me the chance to save money on college tuition. This year I sat down with my guidance counselor, Mark Chebo, to figure out a schedule that would best fit the needs of my future. If you've ever spoken to a student here at Bellows Falls Union High School, you know that many of us have high aspirations for our future. And after meeting with Mr. Chebo, I felt satisfied with my schedule, which included AP English, Psychology and Sociology, Economics, Senior Seminar, Health II, honors calculus and AP Comparative Government. This schedule incorporates much of our social studies and math department. Many of my fellow classmates have similar looking schedules. This cut could have motivated me and others affected by the decision to face the choice of looking into other schools that would offer these beneficial courses. I'm a field hockey athlete and many people in my advanced classes play one or more sports. If other students also considered attending other schools, this could hurt the school's athletics as well. So with this knowledge, I'm extremely appreciative that BFUHS School Board reconsidered their decisions to cut both the math and social studies position for the benefit of all students attending this high school. And that's all.
So I didn't want to interrupt her, but can you just, you're going to have to use your outdoor voice, please. Thank you.
Um, my name is Erin Ross. I'm a junior at Bellows Falls. A lot of my points have also been said already, but I just want to restate them because I believe they're important. Um, throughout my three years at Bellows Falls, I've taken all of the AP courses offered to me as well as the most advanced classes and dual enrollment courses that I can. A few weeks ago, I created a schedule that would best benefit me for the future and my pursuit of college. If this decision had been passed, over 50% of the courses I selected may not have been offered to me. If these courses were truly unavailable, I worry about the opportunities I would have been deprived of. I worry I would not have been provided with advanced, challenging and beneficial classes that set me up the best for college. I believe I speak not only for myself, but also on behalf of my classmates when I say that this cut would have had a huge negative effect on the student body, especially those of us in advanced and AP classes. I'd also like to state that on average, these AP students do better on standardized testing, which would make our school's average test score higher and thus rank our school higher. If we did not offer these classes, I believe that many of our students, including many of my friends, would have began to look at other schools that do offer these courses. This does not only take away our academically strong students, but also our athletes, our artists, our musicians and our enthusiasts. Um, I believe that this cut, if had gone through, would have put the entire student body in a subvantage. And I think, and I thank the school board profusely for reconsidering the refusal or reversed of the decision. I also want to, um, state a thank you to the teachers that actually behind me, many of who have taught me and how amazing they are and how, I don't even think I'd have the courage to be up here speaking on behalf of myself and my students, the rest of the students today if it weren't for them. And I think we definitely need to appreciate the amazing teachers that we have. And again, really thank you to the school board for reversing this decision.
Hi, I'm Noel Shaka and I'm a sophomore at our high school. Um, I feel like a lot of points have already been stated and I just kind of want to hit home on some of them and add some new ones. Um, I'd like to start with thank you for the reversal of this decision. It means a lot to me and a lot to the students here and many more. Um, with hearing the news, um, and the rumors about what was going on in the proposed teachers' cuts, there was a lot of, there was a lot of nerves, um, and particularly the AP students and the students that take those higher level classes were really nervous about being able to keep up the academic, the academic regime that they had kind of created for themselves. And speaking for myself and other classmates who have taken these rigorous course loads since freshman year, it was really difficult to think about not being able to continue with that course and then further go to college, being at a disadvantage, not having kept up what we started early on in our high school career. So I'd just like to point out the fact that lots of students considered leaving, considered other options, and some of those other options were like online classes. And I took Algebra II online at an accelerated pace in one semester, like Maya. And I would like to point out how hard it was to not only find the motivation, but to gather all that information and retain it and use it later on in pre-cal. And I feel like if I had been put in a position to take AP Calc or another AP class online, I would be slighted to the kids that were able to take that in person and really get that one-to-one with their teacher and have that in-person material. So I feel like that was just a really important point to be brought across. As well as the fact that a lot of us here are AP and high honor students, this decision definitely would have affected us, but also the entire school, every class, every levels two through four classes, because class sizes are going to get larger. Kids are going to have more kids in their classes, different kids in their classes. And some voices may no longer be heard when they need to be heard. Kids learn in different ways and I feel that it's really important that everyone in our school is represented and everyone in our school can learn in the ways they need to. And I think this decision would have very poorly changed that aesthetic of our school. Um, I would just like to say thank you for overturning the decision and, um, for hearing our voices and I appreciate it.
So I'm going to take Ian Wallace first and then I'll take someone else on the floor. He's online here.
All right, uh, can you guys hear me okay? Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Awesome. So I'll just, uh, is it all right if I share my screen?
Yes.
Sweet. All right, I'm just going to give, uh, I'm just going to give a brief overview of a letter that I sent the board earlier. Obviously, uh, thank you so much for reversing the decision from the prior meeting. Uh, but ultimately, this issue of AP courses is going to continue to come up into the future. And so I just wanted to provide a few points on that. So I'm going to counter kind of three of the largest argument, or three of the best arguments uh, that I have heard so far from the board. So first is that online alternatives are sufficient for motivated students looking to get that in-person AP experience. Um, I remember taking AP Macro my junior year through VTVLC and it was amazing. But that's because I knew how to study quite well at that point, right? I'd gone through Ms. Frederick's and Mr. Obie's gauntlets my underclass years. And I'd gotten pretty good at studying, but for someone who's a freshman or sophomore, uh, it's just not sufficient to have those self-directed VTVLC experiences. Second, dual enrollment is sufficient for students seeking college credit. Well, not quite, because both valedictorian Leah Clark and I in the class of 2019 attended universities that required high AP scores for credit and did not accept dual enrollment. And the, the availability of AP courses really helped me graduate early from Northwestern. And obviously graduating early or starting as a sophomore, like my sister Mary will, can have major benefits in terms of tuition savings and earnings. You know, what Shannon says, sophomore, that's an entire year of tuition, uh, if you don't have the green and gold. And then finally, BFUHS needs present interest to justify in-person AP course offerings. This might be the more controversial one, uh, but ultimately BFUHS used to have far higher AP participation rates. Uh, for example, my, my early years at BFUHS, AP Human Geography could yield greater than 10 participants. Uh, but right now, uh, courses can often barely, uh, barely yield three students if that, which only equals a 5% participation rate in a class of 60, which ultimately is a lower percent. a lower percentage than a lot of other districts out there. And the quick fix to this is to free up budget space, but doing so masks the underlying issues. While there is growing interest in career-focused tech programs, the rise of tech programs is really not the problem. WNESU, like most school districts, was unprepared for the pandemic, leaving its students unprepared and unmotivated post-pandemic. So BFUHS can either adapt the available opportunities to motivation, or it can encourage students to challenge themselves and help to, and help to, to fix that gap, that learning gap that happened over the pandemic. And a lot of students are unaware of the benefits of learning, the fundamental learning skills in AP courses, and we can do far more to encourage students to participate. So in general, as an alum, I'd be thrilled to see future students have the same opportunities that my class had. I'm glad that they're safe for now, but ultimately investing in, in-person AP participation is gonna improve student outcomes for years to come. It's a lot more difficult to start a program from scratch in a decade than to accelerate students who fell behind. And ultimately, if school were optional and no one wanted to go, be far smarter to motivate students to go than to drop school from the budget entirely. And I think the same could be said of AP courses. So let's live up to our high expectations for students and focus on repairing rather than adapting to the academic damage done during the pandemic. Thank you.
Okay, I have a lady in the middle that, hand her hand up first. Yep.
I didn't recognize you.
That's right. Maureen Parker, former teacher of Bellas Falls Union High School. On April 19th, I sent in my letter of resignation. That was mainly due to the April 10th meeting. And after that, I gave it a week and really thought about what was said and how it was said. Mr. Haas had a department meeting and they talked about how they were gonna stop the math department. I love AP classes.
You guys are all great.
But I focused mainly on kids that were, they, they're challenging kids that want to learn, but sometimes things get in the way. So I taught a lot of Algebra I and then I did stats. And I, we were told that maybe going forward this coming year was you're gonna put 22 kids in Algebra I Part 1. You would have two classes. And I weighed that choice, coming from eighth grade that didn't have such a successful year of in-person teaching. And to put 22 kids in an Algebra I Part 1 class that has come through the pandemic and maybe not so much of an academic, in-person learning in eighth grade, that would do harm to them. And I wish that you had really weighted your decision. Mr. Haas, who knows the school, Mr. Brody, who's in the trenches, did not recommend it. And the school board members that, maybe you're not in the trenches. I would encourage you to come into school more often and see what, what type of learning goes on here. So April 19th, I sent my resignation and I wish I had known that you reversed the decision because it might have been different. So when you're making those decisions, they're hard and you guys do, I value your ability to serve on the board. But take a step back and really think about the impact that it'll have on all kids. Thank you.
Jenny, I'm gonna let the student, I think it's Grace, go first and then you, is that okay? I'm not sure who's arm went up first.
Hello, my name is Grace Waris. I'm a senior here at Bellas Falls Union High School. I wrote this and gathered these testimonies before the decision was reversed, but it's important that these are still heard and I thank you for reversing the decision. Recently, in response to finding out the school board's decision to cut two positions, one of which being Ms. Tabacnik's, I sent out an anonymous survey to the whole school. The first question was a simple yes or no question, asking should Ms. Tabacnik be kept as a member of our school community? On the Google form, this question was required. The next question was a written response question, asking how has Ms. Tabacnik made your school experience better and/or what do you appreciate about Ms. Tabacnik? This question was not required. The survey received a total of 136 responses and 123 of these individuals chose to fill out the written response question. I was made aware that some people filled out the survey more than once, so I took the numbers I knew were duplicates out of the number of people who answered the survey for that affected the data, but only slightly. I was able to do this because some people in their written responses admitted to answering more than once. I am telling you this in order to be completely transparent about the gap, the data I gathered. For the questions to Ms. Tabacnik be kept as a member of our school community, there were 136 total responses to the survey. I had to remove one to make it 135, where I was able to prove it as a duplicate. Nevertheless, this means that out of these 135 individuals, 134 voted yes while one voted no. This means that about 99% of students surveyed want to keep Ms. Tabacnik. The second part of the survey was where I was able to collect testimonies from students who attend BFUHS. As I mentioned before, I received 123 responses. I would like to read a select few of those to you now. She is such an amazing person. She is always energetic and loves to talk to people. Even students who haven't had her visit her throughout the day because she makes everyone feel comfortable. She is also a spectacular teacher and will help everyone she teaches as much as she can. She is my homeroom teacher and she makes homeroom a commonly dreaded thing into a great thing for me. Ms. T deserves to stay, not just because of money, but because of the students. I am a senior who hasn't even had a class with her and I know what a difference she brings to our environment here. Always happy and bouncing around and will talk to anyone. It would be a shame to lose such a good teacher that keeps the students engaged. She's made my school days better by making me smile even when I didn't want to. I know that both myself and many others would be very devastated, devastated to see her leave. I very much appreciate that no matter what is going on in my life, I can talk to her about it and she never fails to put a smile on my face. I haven't had any of her classes, nor do I know her, but I've only heard good things and keep, keeping her seems to be essential to many students' education. Always a positive force and connects with students of all backgrounds, provides integral education on the inner workings of society, preparing students for their future. Ms. T's classes are some of the most informative classes I've taken in my core years at Bellas Falls. Her respect and understanding of students' beliefs and lives outside of the high school is unmatched. Ms. T has made me a better and more informed person. Any student that doesn't get the opportunity to take her class is missing out. She has to be, with no doubt in my mind, my favorite teacher in the whole school. The energy she brings to classes with the catalyst towards me actually enjoying classes in high school. Her classes are always a joy to be in and she is the one class I felt encouraged to speak to, I truly felt about a topic, rather than simply just learning about what happened. She has helped me stay clean from self-harm and has overall made me enjoy being in school a lot more. If she leaves, I wouldn't want to come back and would overall hate school in general. She cares for my overall health over anything else. She wants me to get the best education I can and make sure that happens. She's one of the only people in the school I feel I can talk to about anything. Ms. Tabacnik has single-handedly made my high school experience bearable. Hearing the news that her position had been cut disgusted me, plain and simple. It shows the true lack of understanding and care the school board actually has in regard of the well-being of the students they are supposed to be serving. There has not been another teacher in this entire building I felt I could truly talk to. She has been so overwhelmingly kind and supportive of me, even when I was a freshman, she had barely known for more, for no more than five minutes. I have never been more engaged than when attending her class. Her ability to educate despite the background or mindset of students is truly baffling. I could speak for hours about how amazing she is as a person. Not to put anyone else down at all, but Ms. Tabacnik being the first choice for removal is pure insanity. Her classroom is seen as a safe space for so many in this school, including me. Her openness goes hand-in-hand with her welcoming, understanding, and kind attitude and outlook. Additionally, outside of just how wonderful she is as a person, as an educator, she pushes this forward, forward as students more than any other teacher I have known. Not by being overbearing on schoolwork, but by actually addressing subjects with potency. Classes like Senior Seminar, Global Citizenship, and AP Comparative Government invite students to open their minds and challenge their own beliefs. Outside of Tabacnik herself, these classes contain curriculum that would be devastating to lose. Never in my life have I had a class that tackled social issues and historical events in the way that her classes do. I could write an entire essay about all the reasons Ms. Tabacnik should be kept and I think I may just do so. She is like a mother to us, caring and loving. She brings more to the table. To be honest, she is the table. There are so many plates and drinks on the table. She is full of life and knowledge, just like a feast. And the food and drinks help the community, such as teaching about real-world problems and the things we will need to know about. The drinks are the love and support she gives. The reason of the decision to cut her was distasteful and outright wrong. I invade her classroom sometimes because I have an every-other-day schedule and she has made me intrigued and interested in the topics she brings up within the classroom. She is very supportive, funny, and extremely nice to me and my fellow classmates. For the days I am in the class, she is very engaging and makes me wish I had enough space in my schedule to be in the class and makes me excited to be in the next class, to engage in the debates they do in the class about controversial topics. I want her to stay so the underclassmen of the future can experience her as a person and the classes she teaches, because for the little time I have been in Senior Seminar, makes me envious as a senior of the underclassmen because they get more time to experience any class she teaches. She isn't just a teacher, she is family here at Bellas Falls. It would be a very big mistake to let her go. She deserves to stay. Last year in my World Culture class, we did projects on things that were normalized in cultures that shouldn't be allowed. The classroom environment was comfortable enough to talk through topics and not be uncomfortable. Getting rid of her is getting rid of an asset to BFUHS and taking away education that students are in need of. To add, Ms. T is a person whom students feel they can talk to about important things. There are many more things I could add, but it would be pages on how messed up our school board is. She has always helped me when I had another teacher's class. She has even helped me after school when I wasn't even in her class. I do not know Ms. Tabacnik, but I do not wish to lose any more AP classes as this school already has disappointingly few. And I thought AP Comparative Government stood an almost as intriguing as AP Human Geography, which did not run and has added to my disappointment in this school. Larger classes also make it more difficult for many individuals to learn, seek help from teachers. A loss of Ms. T might mean a loss of many teachers and students, which would be bad for the school. And the heightened amount of people in classes would not be beneficial for any student that currently goes to BFUHS, because the school would know all this already distracting as it is and adding more people to the mix would just make things more chaotic. I do not want Ms. T to leave because she is really happy, funny, and a passionate teacher. I want her as a teacher and to take some of those classes. The school board is making another huge mistake. Ms. T has to stay. There has never been a time I left Ms. T's room or an encounter with her that made me feel bothered, uncomfortable, or in a bad mood. I really can't describe enough how much a small town like this needs a person like Ms. T. I also believe getting rid of her would put your students at risk of failing and not graduating. Because of how strong of an impact Ms. T has brought to our school and the people around her, heavy retaliation will happen. Students not going to class and not coming to school. Also, because of the subject Ms. T teaches and her beliefs, many questions and rumors will spread like wildfire. I just hope and pray they decide to keep our beloved Ms. T. Now for some closing remarks for my son, and I'm going to keep this short. I truly believe that the school board is making a colossal mistake and that you don't understand the magnitude of your decisions and the consequences that will be a direct result of those decisions. As you have heard, countless students treasure Ms. T, not only for who she is as a teacher and how she teaches the curriculum, but also for how she is as a person. She is an invaluable member of the school community and losing her would be detrimental. How angry do we have to get? What else do we have to do to prove to you that the decisions you are making will not be beneficial to either the students' well-being, the teacher's well-being, or the community's well-being? How much noise do we have to make in order for you to hear and see that the decisions you are making do not accurately reflect the feelings of the majority of the students you are supposed to be representing? Thank you for your time.
Good evening. I'm Jenny Perry. I am a BFUHS graduate, proud one. I actually have a couple, a coach and a teacher, at least in this building that I have and are still here, thankfully. I am a proud 22-year educator in this district and most of all, I am the mom of two children in this room. I did not plan anything to speak about, but I feel compelled to remind you all the value of remembering that students are human beings. They are not a number only. And I know education is complex. Decisions should take a lot of discussion and consideration. And I know from experience how difficult it can be to think about all of the layers and all of the influences and factors that go into making decisions for us, but please think about all students. We've heard a really wonderful representation, excuse me, from AP students and honor students. I'd like to remind you that I have a student as well, Cam, who spoke, who doesn't consider himself academic. He has struggled, and I'm speaking about this with permission, he has some struggle with learning and just school experience. And I will tell you that being here in this school and having some of the educators in this building has turned his view of school around, his view of himself as a student and a person and learner. And I think there are so many things we have to consider. You can look at data only, but we're doing a disservice to our students. So please, moving forward, really be thoughtful about looking beyond a number when making a decision. It can seem very simple, perhaps, you know, like no big deal, but it is greatly impacting all students in this building and beyond. So thank you for your time and thank you again for the reversal of the decision. I appreciate it.
My name's Todd Strick. I didn't plan to say anything, but I felt like I had to come up here after watching how this meeting has played out so far and the reversal of the decision. I think that a lack of transparency and a little bit of lack of communication between the board and the public has caused a lot of rift in the last couple of weeks since the decision was made. I've seen a lot of misinformation about the issue. I've seen students talking about it that aren't informed and I think that's partially on them, but I also think it's partially on the board. I think going forward that a transparency policy would be really important for everyone keeps in mind. And there's some information that I learned tonight that a lot of people didn't know prior to this meeting. For example, like the fact that you guys didn't have the information prior to making the decision or right up to the decision. And I would also like to note that this has kind of snowballed in the last couple of weeks a little bit with the, the, after the decision. And I think it's created a tiny bit of a spectacle, which is obvious, and I think all the support is good, but I think it's created a little bit of a spectacle and I personally believe that there's a portion of this board that has pandered to that spectacle tonight. I think it's borderline unprofessional. That's all I got.
Hello, I'm Grace Plough. I'm a sophomore at this high school. And I did write something that I planned on speaking, but a lot of it got touched on. So first, I would just like to say thank you for overturning your decision and deciding to keep these spots. But I would also like to say that if you didn't, overcrowding in classrooms would become an issue. And last year, I took a normal history class and this year I'm an AP World History student. Now, last year in this class, it was very rambunctious. There were too many students and they caused a lot of issues. And while I had a wonderful teacher, it still impacted my learning and other students' learning. So if these classrooms continue to get overcrowded, this can lead to students not receiving the help that they may need, teachers facing outbursts that are not deserved, and other such things. And not only that, but without this AP class, I would continue to be in a classroom that does not keep me stimulated. As last year, I passed that class with over 100 because I already knew everything. So without this AP class, this can leave students feeling unstimulated, feeling like they're not learning anything, and it can also lead them unprepared for the future, for example, in college. Because if you are in a classroom where you don't feel stimulated and you feel like you know everything, you will not feel the need to study. And if you're passing all your tests without studying, you won't study in other classes. You will not study in college. You won't study in the future and that can very negatively impact you. So I'm very grateful that you decided to overturn your decision and I would just like to bring overcrowding of classrooms to your attention as an issue. I'm sorry.
I'm Susan Swan. I'll be retiring from the math department after 33 years of service this year. I've spent my entire career at Bellas Falls Union High School working with, working with amazing colleagues and educators, building a strong and diverse curriculum in this building that will meet and address the needs of all students. And forgive me, but it's not all about the numbers. You won't hear me say that very often. It's not all about the numbers. It's not all about the student-to-teacher ratio. It's about offering a big school schedule in a small school. A big school schedule in a small school. John Ratty used to say, "It's hard to offer a big school schedule in a small school." It's expensive. On paper, it's expensive. But the effects of cuts of these nature is more expensive in the lives and in the long run of all of our students at every level. Rifts of this nature do nothing but weaken a strong, diverse curriculum that we have built, that works to provide a wide variety of educational opportunities to meet the needs of all of our students, a diverse student body. We need a diverse schedule. We need a big school schedule in a small school, and that is not cheap. I've cried several times this last couple of weeks after this decision. And to think that 33 years of everything that our department has built was potentially going to change and that the students would not be experiencing that same level of diverse classes to meet all of their needs. And so I thank you for reversing your decision today. But it sounds like that could still be a conversation next year as the budget is being developed. And so I would ask you to think very carefully about all of these things that everybody has said tonight. It's important to offer a big school schedule in a small school so that all of the students' needs are met. It's not only about student-teacher ratio. Thank you.
I'm Ben Perry. Yeah. That was great. Okay. So I'm Ben Perry. I know many of you. I'm a current junior at the high school right now, proud Westminster resident. And I know the, like, like the main majority of this argument has already been decided. We've already reversed it. But at least for me, I'd like to talk more on a personal level and speak about kind of the impact these kind of classes in schools had for me and how the idea that something like that could be stripped away with a single vote is really dangerous and could affect more people beyond me or beyond AP students. Keep it plain and simple. Schools, schools are the reason why I get up in the morning. I mean, I wake up every day, I think, hey, I get walking history class. Hell, if it's a test, you know? But it just means so much to me that this school has been able to give me the opportunity to take harder classes and actually achieve what I am capable of. And so many other students in its entire founding, or since its founding, and in just in the years that I've seen, so many people have been successful of it. It's disheartening to think that somebody like me who could do everything that I could do or everything that I would ever want to do, the exact same thing 10 years down the line, but could potentially not be able to because of a single decision 10 years ago that never got reversed, is, it's just saddening to me. Because I know there are a lot of people out there, past, present, future, that either benefited from this and would look back and see, oh, that thing I really liked in high school, that's no longer there. Or currently, oh, I want to take an AP class next year. Can't take it anymore. Or, oh, I'm going to be in high school in three years. Older cousin says I should take some classes. I can't take them anymore because they cut positions. I just think that, like, that kind of impact can't really be seen on the microscopic level that is a single vote. Was it 14, 14 days ago, two weeks ago? So all of the points I could have said have been addressed. I think it ripples beyond just the classes being cut or just the one position, two positions that wouldn't be totally filled. I just, it's, it's, it is saddening to me to think that something like that that can be offered to people could no longer be offered. Because I know it's not just me speaking, but there's plenty of other people have spoken for me. But school is like the only reason why I do anything at this point. And to think that somebody else couldn't get to experience something so great that I have been able to in the past three years and hopefully four is, you know, just, it saddens me. So I would like to thank you for reversing this action. I do think it is something that hopefully wouldn't come up again after hearing all these testimonies. But just in the future, I think about a greater impact beyond a vote of less people entering the classes. So, thank you.
Anyone else on the floor? Okay, thank you very much, everyone. I would like to move on to, sorry, I lost track here. I'm going to reports. And Jim, you are next. And Jim, I'm going to ask your permission to take a break if I can while you do your report. You can do your report. I'll catch up. Is that okay? I didn't want to do it to the teachers and the kids, so I'm going to do it to you.
No, you sleep when you're dead.
I just want to, just want to mention, in looking at page one, could I just, folks, if you're going to stay, if you could please just not, the muttering, the owl picks up everything, and then they won't be able to hear. So, thank you. Sorry. So page one is the function page that we have typically normally given for the financial report. The sheets two through 17 are kind of the account structure background. And again, please keep in mind, I say this broadly, this, this is e-finance that we're getting out of. And the, the other pages are certainly not pretty or something that I would like to have taken part in. So I just want to give you the financial overview. We're getting close to the first of May next week, where you are. So on the expense side, you have $390,000 to the good. On the revenue side, you have about $130,000 deficit. And again, that was principally to some item that for $142,000, potentially for, for tuition that we're not going to get. So it nets out to roughly $260,000 to the positive. Now, I will say this, and think of it as a $300,000 surplus at this time. And there is monies that are going to come in from the Haver Fund, which, which we're going to transfer that now. And you'll see it show up in a reduction in, in salaries and benefits. So any immediate questions? The revenue pages are the last two pages, and those haven't changed. For revenues, we still have taxes that have to come in. And we have the state educational grant money. There's, the last payment will come in in May, and will balance out. So it's pretty straightforward.
My question? Yes, sir.
Okay.
And Jim, the question is this. Haver was a dedicated gift to this school. If I'm hearing you correctly, you're suggesting that it is going to offset revenue which was not received. How do we, how do we keep the Haver money segregated from our general funds?
It's, the Haver is, is separate. I mean, there's roughly, wait, no, $240,000. I think it's a little less, but yeah. Well, but there's, there's going to be 50 that's going to be, we've expended in a position, and it'll reduce it by 50,000. So that's, that's where you'll be with it. But it is separate.
Okay.
It is separate. Any other questions?
Any other questions for Jim?
Okay, just quickly, knock a hole in him. Yeah.
So we, I don't have any work till 6:30 to my money.
Hey. This gives you some idea of where we are with the capital reserve funding. And again, it's taken a while, but this is where you're at. So we're putting this money, which is which is $1,221,684. 98 cents also. That's what we're putting into an account that's going to earn interest in the book. And set aside for when you think you want to pull it and, you know, expand. But at least we've got that. It's set aside. The only other monies that I, I'll mention to you that there was $53,145 for academic enrichment. That's from timber sales, and they, they must have set it aside. My, my concern is, I hope that's not going to just sit. So we've got that.
So that will be in a separate line item also?
Yes. Yes, it will. Other than that, I think, you know, we're getting ready to, to hand out the audit and get the approval at the next meeting, possibly. But what we've made is right.
Thank you, Jim. Does anybody have any questions for Jim? Jim, I see none, and I'm going to tell you that you can start heading home if you'd like.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you for sticking it out when we're here. Principals report, please.
All right, fairly straightforward. I know we've got these young people who are going to do a presentation, so I don't want to keep them back. Tomorrow, we've got math testing and SAT testing. It's our third round of math testing for ninth graders. And we have 29 students that I'm aware of that have taken the SAT. And that will happen in school tomorrow. Got a three-hour delay to do that. Earth Fest Day on Friday, Patty Murray and the Science Department had set up that day to add enrichment experiences for our kids. And we invited the fourth graders from Central to come up. I offered many activities, such as climate literacy, trailreentering, nature photography, carpentry for habitats, Earth Day art, and a guest speaker. In short, the day was very successful, and all students had a great learning experience from what I experienced walking around. Ms. Murray is going to give me more feedback later this week to what she had found from the day as well. Number three, I, I put in a little note. I know that these guys are going to do a way better job than me to explain AP versus dual enrollment. There was a point asked on the March 27th meeting, what courses offering through AP are not available through dual enrollment? Well, all AP courses are available through dual enrollment, whether there are some courses are offered through VTVLC. Mostly, AP courses are offered online. Our VTVLC courses may be able to be paid for by the Vermont voucher. I haven't had confirmation of that, but that information can be found out. I put in a, a little definition of what dual, dual enrollment is. And as I say, you're going to hear more about that later. I'll be happy to chime in as these guys do their presentation. Spring sports. We're well underway in the spring season. The following team's performances are varsity baseball, and this is up to Saturday. Varsity baseball is 3-3. JV baseball is 0-4. Softball is 3-0. JV softball is 1-1. Girls tennis is 0-3. And our track team has gone to two meets so far. And most recently, the girls won the meet at Fairhaven, which was a very good achievement because it was a very tough field there. Post-high school aspirations is number five. Recently, just listening to a few, a few comments battened around about we have 30% of students go to college. That didn't kind of wear well with me, so I enclosed the last five years' table of students. I, I knew that 30% figure was kind of inaccurate. I know the, the national, in national data, 50% of kids that go to a four- or two-year college end up maybe not completing that. But it doesn't say all Bell's Falls Junior High School students are that. The data that I have, though, as you can see, the four and the two-year colleges, it averages about 60% of our kids actually go to college. So the, again, there's more, more figures to look at there. Some, 25% of them, on average, seem to go into employment, which is, is huge as well. And that, that may lead more towards our, all our other efforts that we're making to meet every kid's needs. Sorry. Look at that here. Number six, our jazz ensemble, they will be, they've been invited to perform, scheduled to perform at Church Street Burlington from 3:40 to 4:20 on Friday, June 9th, as part of the Burlington Discover Festival. And our BFUHS prom this year will be in the high school. It's a junior and senior prom with a view to catching up from the pandemic and going back to a junior prom where hopefully no one suffers too much. And that'll be held on May 6th at the high school.
John? That's all I got. I have a question on that chart you gave us for the percentage of students that went to college.
Sure.
How do we track that, you know? So it might really look good on paper that maybe 50% of the kids signed up for college, got accepted. Do we even follow whether they get accepted or not? And how do we know if they stayed more than one semester?
The, the data I did get from our counseling office, they do follow kids going up to college. I am not sure, so I'm not going to report out until I'm sure of, of information, the feedback that they get of our students going into the end of year one and into year two. That I can, that I can certainly follow up on and see if that is available to us to report back on. I just felt that it was, you know, important to at least look and see where they're going to go.
I don't want, I, I understand why you gave that to us, but I would like to know. And so I, I think that I know we answered the question, but I'd be curious what you get. Because, you know, I have a, I have a child in college. I don't think that, other than because they know her, they know where she is or that she kept going to college or that she's going for a master's. I don't think that no one from the high school is tracking her. I can speak personally on that, that no one is, no one has asked her to fill out a survey or anything so that we can keep a track of how well are we doing.
It's something that needs to be looked at.
You know, when we talk about, the most important thing we talked about tonight was making sure that we were, you know, getting those kids where they need to be and making sure they are succeeding. and making sure they are succeeding. And, you know, I'd like to hope that all of those are, you know, in the same boat as somebody that's very close to me. But I think you'd be surprised, the numbers that aren't getting to that fourth year or that fifth year.
Well, as I say, the national average is 50%, I believe. Correct, me too. And that, you know, when it was mentioned, it was 30% of kids go.
I think that's a closer bet after the first semester. When you start looking at class, but anyways.
I'm talking about.
I'm just asking for somebody to try to get that information. Be able to track that in years to come so that people, it's not going to be me sitting at this table.
Or maybe set up a system that we can continue to do that.
Thank you. Jason.
Thank you, Molly. John, we heard a lot of feedback from the audience, which was very good feedback for me of continuing to try to learn. So one of the things you sent out was absences from staff for this whole entire year. And it's just data, okay? It's all it is. I'm not just saying this is data, okay? So on Mondays, all right, we've had 131 absences from staff in this school. That's the whole year. That's, you know, that's not 131 straight days. That's just all of them put together. Mondays, there's 131 days missing or absent, sick, whatever. Tuesday, it's 105. Wednesday, it's 95. Thursday, it's 146. And Friday is 160. It's just, so I've had five kids in a row. I'm going to say that two that are still in school are going to probably take AP courses if they're not already. So I believe all that. I believe in not being mediocre at whatever you do, okay? So and since Mr. Roby's here, I don't know if it ever got back to him, but I would somehow like to incentivize staff to be here because they are important and education is important. So I don't know what the secret sauce is to make sure that there's more people in the building and we don't have 18 and 19-year-old substitute teachers teaching our kids. And that's a problem for me when we're having highly-paid professionals and they're not here. And I get they need to use their sick days. I get all that. So me for one, I'm okay with incentivizing people to be here more often instead of using sick days. That's just me. And it's just that.
Can you speak on that? I just, as a new member of the board, you know, one of the reasons I got on here was to make sure that we were looking at policy representing our administration, our faculty, and most importantly, our students. And I would like this board, including myself, to work on not micromanaging. Because there are CBA agreements, there are situations that are going on, and there's a lot more issues that we have to work on as a board to connect, repair, and build relationships amongst this. So I just want to make a point.
We also heard that education was important. You can't do it without professionals, right? And it is our job to micromanage.
Anyone else have a question for the principal? David?
Yeah. First off, John, like I've said before, but thank you for giving us the continual data stream. And I didn't have any problem getting to your reports today, except for one. And you did grant me access, so I have to read that one too. But I'm interested. You sent us one, I would refer to it as data dump. I hope it's not offensive to anybody. One data dump, which was post-high school aspirations. I took that to be nationally normed, John. And I'm not looking for an answer right now, but I am curious because I could not correlate BFUHS local to what I believe was that nationally normed chart of post-high school aspirations. That would, even though some people are hyper-local in their focus, I would nonetheless be interested to know how we're doing in the big picture. Thank you.
I'll look for you next time.
Thanks, Molly.
Any other questions? Priscilla?
You gave us a sheet that showed AP past scores. Are you claiming scores is past if there are three, four, or five?
Yes.
Okay, but some schools do not accept a three as past for college credit. So is there, do you track that as well?
Do I, do we track that?
Yeah, which ones the students go to and which ones do get credit? Because some of them do not.
Well, I shared, first of all, I shared the previous meeting. I shared all the colleges and what the subs and rates levels are. And I believe that students, when they're looking at college, look to see as they map out their route, and I can't speak for accounting on this, but they look to see what colleges accept what level of courses. I can use someone who I know very well who went to UVM and for taking Human Geography, World History, and AP Literature and Constitution. She got nine credits, which made her freshman year. And for this person, it was more about not saving the money, but making it a more easier opening to college. And that was certainly very helpful. And we looked at that, but we didn't plan on that with this person. But no, we haven't, we don't track all of those. No, I think students look at that as they plan for college. And the data or the levels are all there when you reset.
Mercy.
Priscilla, I think, I mean, I know what you're asking for. But maybe when a student is a freshman, they may not know what college they're going to be applying for. So they can make the choice of these AP classes and have that opportunity. Maybe it won't carry over to the college they choose, but we're providing them the best education we can here.
I wasn't questioning whether it was a good thing. I was just wondering whether we do track.
I know. I know. Just voicing my opinion too.
That's fine.
Yeah, I don't mind speaking to this a little bit. I do a lot of work in the offseason with the College Board. I've helped them over the past 12 years with the read, particularly for my topic, AP World History. So what I've been doing in my downtime is working on, I developed test questions for the College Board for the AP tests. I developed the rubric in which they're graded. I've helped positions such as question leader, exam leader, and assistant to the chief reader, which I know sounds like an Office reference, but that's actually the title. But basically, what I would say to that, I think to answer your question, Priscilla, is each college is different in what they're going to do. So that's hard to contract. But what I will say from talking to the upper bosses of College Board is the more things you have on your resume, the more colleges want you anyway, even if they're not going to give you their credits. We had a student years ago go to Brown. She didn't get all of her AP credits, but that's what set her apart from other students. So I think we are doing them a service, whether or not they're, I mean, obviously, if they get the credit, they're saving money in the long run, sure. But I think it's really setting them up for being competitive against, you know, kids from these large schools in Texas and California and Florida and other parts of the country.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for the principal? Okay, we have student presentation.
So you really put us at the like 9:30 slot here. Jake and I have a test tomorrow, so could we push this back later? Because it's really important and we have a lot of information on the things that you've been discussing.
No, that's, yeah, it's perfectly fine.
And I think it's important that that information is expressed and that you understand that as the board. I think it's important to have information when making decisions.
We'll put you on next meeting.
Yeah, that'd be appreciated.
There probably won't be so many speeches.
Yeah, yeah.
I appreciate you coming and, and you guys do, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Thanks, guys.
We're off track again, Andy. Okay, we are at new business.
We have policy.
Oh, we got policy.
I just wanted to comment that we need to get approved E1 Title Engagement. It was supposed to be on for tonight. It was listed on the last one. And C15 Student Contract, so we need to put that on the next.
C15 did what?
Those are two required ones that have.
Okay, you want the numbers, please?
E1 and C15. They've been approved at the WNSU, so.
Okay. New business. So we have typically this time of year, the teachers are going to sign their contracts. You know, they just don't sign their contract and it kind of moves forward. But two teachers actually submitted letters of resignation, so we just wanted to bring them to the board and just make the board aware. One of them was Maureen Parker, who already spoke and expressed her reason. So I won't go into just reading through her letter, but we did receive that letter of resignation. And then the other one is Jennifer Arrow-Garrettson, who is our Coral teacher. And she has resigned because she's taken a position that's closer to home. It's a full-time position, but, you know, so we'll be actively looking for those two positions. But as I said, typically, we don't always get resignations this time of year. We just, teachers don't sign their contracts. I just wanted to bring them to the board so, you know, the board can accept them or. Can we deny them? Well. They don't have to sign, they don't have to sign the contract, so, but yes, you can deny them too.
Molly, maybe we should ask Maureen if she wants to change her mind?
Well, I would like to speak to that if we could. I was going to ask if we could vote or accept these individually because.
Technically, we don't have to accept them.
No, technically, you don't have to accept them. So essentially, you can say, we're not going to accept Maureen's resignation.
Well, that's what I'm going to say.
If she doesn't turn in her contract.
Okay, well, I, if there was going to be a vote, I would not accept Maureen's letter of resignation because it sounded like, you know, with a little love and attention, we might be able to get her to stay. And losing both Maureen and Susan Swan from the math department is going to kill our kids. It's really, I mean, they are two awesome teachers. My kids, I have six of them, as many of you know, four of them have graduated. They've had both of these ladies, and if it wasn't for them, they wouldn't have gotten through math.
No harm, no foul. Make a motion, Jim.
I would make a motion not to accept Maureen Parker's letter of resignation and give her a little honey and see if she will take it back. Anyone have any?
Can I have a discussion?
Yeah, I was just going to ask.
So I would recommend that we, now that we have received this and the board has made their decision, that we ask Andy as a superintendent and John as the principal, because they're the ones that live this every day, allow them the opportunity to have those conversations as I think that's a superintendent and principal role. That's just, that's just.
Oh, yeah, I wasn't going to talk to her.
No, but I'm saying I think it should come, I don't, do we need a vote for that here?
There's no vote needed on either of these. It was more informational to provide to you.
I'm just trying to get her going. Somebody had to say something here.
Because you got to get June like, it's like the siren, you know?
Oh, please, my watch has screamed at me a few times tonight.
So if I'm understanding.
Let's try to keep Maureen. I mean, it sounded.
Potentially is to, is to, is to see if Maureen might be interested in staying, if I'm reading the board correctly.
Yes, and could you report at the next meeting?
We could.
And, you know, Jennifer's got a full-time job. We weren't offering her a full-time job. I understand that.
And it's closer to home.
But Maureen, Maureen should stay.
Fully noted.
Okay, we are on to A B Track Surface.
I would just like to add this to an agenda item for the next meeting, since this is late tonight. Just as we've gone through the tennis court situation, my understanding, and it might not be accurate information, but my understanding is that tennis and track renovations were put into a budget. Not sure if that budget was approved. But if so, I would like us maybe at the next meeting to have conversation and dialogue that if a track replacement is needed, that we are, we understand where we are with tennis and the situation that happened and kids that are not able to play due to that, then maybe we can avoid that in other aspects of our campus and just be on the forefront of that. So really, Andy, if there's a way to just see if, was that approved in the budget or not? And then you go from there.
We'll definitely take a look.
Okay, we good? We have made it to director's comments. Mike Stack, are you still with us?
Can you hear me?
Yep. Do you have any director's comments?
Sure, I do. Tonight was very informative, a good, a good series of input from the, from the public. And I think the bottom line for me, again, as a new board member, I really believe the board is looking for the same thing that the school organization and the community is looking for. And that's clear direction, strong leadership, and better results. We'll find out from John what the actual numbers are. But ballpark, I still believe roughly 60% of our students will not graduate from college. And in my, my conversations with many, many people, the consensus is that we could be doing a better job preparing those non-college graduates for today's job market. The 40% of the students, which we heard from many of those tonight that are going on to college, I think they're being well-cared-for and we're doing a great job by them. And I don't think that anything that we've talked about or anything that we intend to do is with the thought of taking anything away from that 40% of the students. The bottom line, we're not, we're not trying to, this is not simply a cost-driven set of discussions. You know, we're not doing Bell's Falls High School on the cheap. We're running at about a 25,000-per-pupil rate, which is well above the Vermont average and significantly above the national average. I know Andy has hired New Solutions, a consulting organization, who's going to simultaneously be looking at many of these same issues. And change is difficult. But I do think that we have to take a look at what we're doing and what we're providing in terms of education for that non-college-directed group of students. Ballpark it at 60% and make sure that we're taking care of them also. So I think the listening tour continues. We heard a lot from the 40% tonight. I think we have to, again, meet with the teachers, meet with guidance. And that's the main purpose of our retreat that we've planned, to take a look at curriculum, take a look at this topic. We've got, we've got a lot to look at. So I'm encouraged by the input we got tonight and we'll get more.
Thank you, Mike. Jason?
So part, part of our frustration, I believe, as a board and being on this board for a couple of years now, is the constant request for data so we can make good, informed decisions. And then when you feel like you get half of the data or none of the data on constant request, kind of leads us to what happened again tonight, and it's happened before. And I don't know what the solution is, but it becomes very frustrating. And then we, as a board, probably spend a lot of time on this, more than we need to, compared to our regular jobs, which, you know, we don't get paid a whole lot for this job. And it's not about the money, obviously. So then that tends for us to micromanage because we're looking for answers. And then when you don't get them, it becomes frustrating. And I'm assuming the new board members are feeling that frustration because that's, that is the reality of it. And that, and that is what's been happening on a constant. So, thank you.
Darcy.
So I've learned a lot in the past two weeks about school board, school board members. Something that I learned tonight is it was so beneficial for me to have public here. Like, thank you for the two left in the crowd, but um I felt like it made a connection, there was communication, and there's a connection between school board and what we're here for, the students, the faculty, the community. So I just wanna encourage people to keep coming and talking to us. And, you know, even if we can't say anything at a time, or we put it on the next agenda, just hearing from them and their concerns, or maybe some positive too from them would be great. And I, I hope I can return that as a board member, and we all can keep growing stronger together doing the best we can do. What's that?
June?
Yes, I'm, um first and foremost, I'm on this board for all of the kids, not just the two that I have in this school. I want them all to get a great education, to have a safe um and productive environment. We have some great teachers in this building, and we need to provide them with a safe environment and some strong leadership. I also noticed that it's not just the high school, but the whole district is, their, their morale is like in, way in the dumps. They all hate us, everyone hates the board because it's our job sometimes to make the hard unpopular decisions. And when leadership is weak, it's even more apparent. We're human, sometimes we're gonna make mistakes. But given the correct information, I intend to learn from mine and to strive to do a better job. In preparation for this meeting, I skimmed through the CBA and found that the board has a great deal of responsibilities to this building. We haven't even touched on what our responsibilities are. I've, I've been on this board for over a year. We've never even seen some of the stuff that the CBA says that we're supposed to be in charge of. Um I'd like to have that on an agenda and invite Kate Kane and Cheryl Charles um and go through the CBA at a future date. I would also like, um it's been suggested by several Facebookers that the board members are not in the trenches, um that they need to get involved, be, observe classes. I can say that I did it once this school year, and I came for a second time and was told that I make the teachers nervous and to just walk around the halls and listen through the dividers. I have since learned that the district has a policy about the school board members and encourages them to be in the building, encourages them to be more active in the building and, and um more involved. So I'm going to try to do that again, and I would like to recommend that the whole board do, does that. And um as a board, we need to do a better job come budget season, we need to go line for line. And I didn't miss a budget meeting, I was not a voter on the budget committee, but I, there was a lot of discussion, but we didn't go line by line. We need to go line by line, we need to pay more attention to the little things in the budget. And to anybody, please, I'm available to speak to anyone. I've heard so many rumors the last two weeks going around that it just frustrated me to no end. And I did have a few people that called me and asked. So, and lastly, I'd like to shout out to all the sports teams um out there, go Terriers.
Bonnie?
I just thought tonight was very informative, um great that the students, the teachers came out. Um I think it's very important for that communication, um and I, I learnt a lot.
Brenda?
Yeah, we tossed um nu- um numbers around in some of the discussion. But we also tossed words around, and I noticed that a school was for instruction, and me as a board had to take some instruction today. And um there's information, disinformation, and misinformation terms thrown around. But what I thought out today was respect for the process on both sides. And I liked seeing that because saying, I'm sorry, or I was wrong, is just goes a long ways. And so I saw the word reconsidered come out. And when I thought about that, I thought about, I like music, so I like harmony. Harmony is different voices, but they have to come together to make that beautiful sound. And how if it doesn't happen in the first practice? It, practice makes perfect, so as a board, we're never gonna be perfect, but practicing helps us better, to be better. And I saw that tonight.
Thank you. Rob?
I would just like to um applaud the members of our community that came out and spent the time to come and uh share their voice. Um I thought it was great to hear from parents, from the teachers, from the students. And I think, as I mentioned before, and all of us, I know in our hearts wants to, want to do things that are in the best interest of our kids. We live in a time right now after COVID where kids are going through a lot and teachers are right there with them. That's not to mean that everything's perfect and there's things that we can't tweak along the way, but as a board member, I want people in our community to look to us as a shining light and an example so that we can be their voice and we can share that partnership, cause that's really what it is. We are the partnership for them. This is an elected position, the community has elected us, and that's a huge responsibility for all of us. And so um as somebody that's new, that's learning every day, uh I'm looking forward to our board retreat um on May twenty-second so that we all can get together and share ideas and thoughts as we move forward to setting goals, not only for ourselves, but for the, for the administration and, and us moving forward. So I look forward to that. I think one of the big things for me is just because we might disagree across the table doesn't mean we dislike the person or hate the person. I think it's healthy to have disagreements to move things forward. And so um, you know, I'm, I'm encouraged by what we saw tonight, and uh I hope we will continue when we're making decisions that we don't make them in the eleventh hour, that we don't make them with getting information and making a decision in that day. That we take the time to really look at that, because the decision we make today not only affects these kids next year, but affects them for the next five or seven years with opportunities. And so thank you for that.
Priscilla?
I love the passion that our community has and the caring that they give to our schools. And I never want to see that not there. I do wish that our data was more firm, that we're basing decisions on, because we had to make decisions tonight without the final knowledge of what actual scheduled classes will be. But hopefully it was good for our community and for our students, that's the bottom line and what we care about. So continue that love for each other and that passion and that caring. Thanks.
David?
Thanks, Molly. Okay. I'd like to remind the board that Pietro Lynn works for us. He is contracted not to the administration, but to the boards. Interesting distinction when you start examining legal opinions closely. However, um I bringing that up strictly isn't a side. And uh what I want to talk about is this, it's already come up around the table I hear, I think June recommended, we have to look at the CBA. Our contract with Pietro used to, and I believe still includes board training. And I can tell you that um that is arguably some of the best money we will ever spend. And I've obviously been to a couple of Pietro's trainings, and I've been to the V S B S trainings and the different, pardon me, Vermont School Boards Association. I tend to misspeak when I think of that organization. But um their trainings do not hold a candle to what Pietro has provided us with in the past. So when boards feel that they are struggling, maybe it's time to do the training which we've already paid for. And um glad to see there's still a fair number of people left here in the Zoom. And I wanna take note of the fact that um there were quite a number of W N E A red T-shirts in the room tonight. And I think that um the crowd in general did a pretty good job of bending us over, and bend we did. And I have to address the board here and tell you something, and that is this. A board which cannot make the tough decisions and stand by them is going to have a very difficult time moving this school forward. Thank you, Molly.
Thank you. I thought tonight went very well. And you know, I, I can, I can hear some people tell me, you know, you win some, you lose some, you gotta keep working, get up, tie your boots on and go. I am relieved, proud, whatever the right word is, that we did what we did tonight, because I thought it was the right thing to do. And so I guess I won one tonight, if that's what we're looking at. But the real truth is that I don't have any stakes in the game, I'm a community member, I wanna hire some of these kids to come to work for me. And I wanna know that we're doing the best we can. And, and when it came to how this all happened, it didn't settle well with me. And so I would like to task all of you with not talking to each other about it, but bringing one thing to the board retreat that is something that is gonna help you be a better board member. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you what mine is right up front. I am going to ask that none of us bring anything to a board meeting with numbers or facts unless they have some real. I, I think it needs to be approved by the superintendent or the principal that these are the facts. We can't just bring something to a board and not, and not have it. So if it's, whatever it is, whether there's, you know, fifty kids on a football team or fifty-two, I don't care what we're talking about. Have the facts, I think they have, they, they should be proven before they're brought here. Don't send an email with facts two hours before a meeting and expect somebody to be able to take care of that, because, because I can't, I'm working. You send an email on the day of the meeting, a pretty good chance I'm not gonna see it. So those things, we have to do a better job of those things. So my thing I'm bringing to the meeting is I, I am going to ask every single board member a goal will be not to bring anything in to our meetings that hasn't been, if it's figures and facts, it has to be proven by the school first, because hopefully then things will go smoother. Um that's all I got, the next meeting is May eighth. What time is it?
It is nine fifty-five.
Nine fifty-five, we're adjourned.
This meeting was recorded by Falls Area Community Television, located at One Hospital Court, Bellows Falls, Vermont. If you would like a copy of the meeting, our phone number is eight zero two four six three one six one three. Or email us at fact eight ten at gmail dot com. Falls Area Community TV, keeping government honest.